Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Orderwoman Louanna Oinger.
Here.
Alderman Stevenson. City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
In your package, you have received a copy of the minutes of the previous meeting from August 11, 2020. You've had a chance to peruse those. We entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion on the board. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to that motion? Hearing none, we will approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Any nays. Hearing none, motion carries. There are no proclamations or a recognition of citizens by the mayor. Would either the alderman like to make any comments?
I'd like to make a comment. In a few minutes, we're going to have to make some decisions. And of all the times I've ever been an alderman, it's the second toughest decision I've had to make. You've got several good people, several, everybody that's applied for it, everybody's resume was excellent. It's one of the hardest decisions I've ever had to make, but I want you to know that we try to do the best we can because we won't be wrong to somebody. Thank you.
All right, we now have our communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. For our monthly update on COVID, we're moving along following the governor's guidelines as we've done throughout this pandemic. We've been extremely lucky. We have had our first COVID case positive of an employee. That employee was asymptomatic and has returned to work. We currently have no employees in quarantine, and we have got everything just about opened back up except the swimming pool at the community center. We are not just allowing people to come in and swim. We are doing organized swimming activities, but we're not just letting anybody come in. We have opened up the locker rooms, the limited access, and we are seeing very little use of the facility. The public is just not getting out and coming in and taking advantage. See a lot of people over at the city park and at some of the satellite parks. But we're just continuing to move along. If anybody has kept track as we have, our numbers have dropped dramatically in the past week. They've been on a downward trend for three weeks, and we hope that will continue. We went from triple digits to double digits from last week to this week, so that's extremely good news. And at our department head meeting this morning, I informed the department heads that I'm very proud of the job they've done, and I'll echo that again in here to you all because I think it's a tribute to them, the way they've handled it, followed the guidelines that we put forth, and also the employees. If they hadn't kind of bought in and protected themselves, I don't think we could have had the record that we have. I don't want to jinx us, I mentioned that this morning, but right now, I'd put our record up against anybody as far as when you've only had, you've got 126 employees and as much as we are active in the public and what we do is public service. And to have only had one case so far, I think that's phenomenal. And again, you know, I don't want to jinx us, we could have 10 tomorrow, and I'll be sick that I bragged about it. But as of right now, I'm very proud of the job that the staff and employees have done as far as dealing with it. I've got another issue we're going to talk about in a little while, but I'll wait till Gary gets up, and then we're going to go into another issue that I need to, he and I need to bring y'all up to speed on, that we're probably going to need y'all's help on a little bit. That's all we got.
Okay. Next item is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, and that is item A is consideration of appointment of City of Newport Municipal Judge. I'll explain the process briefly. Here's what we'll do. Each candidate that we've received a resume from will be allowed five minutes to speak and give us their curriculum vitae. We're going to ask that you follow Ms. Regina out to the conference room, and we'll do it one by one in alphabetical order, which really means, Cardi, I think that makes you first, Ms. Sheldon, I think you're second, and Ms. Vick would be last. So, Cardi, if you want to stay in.
All right.
The podium is yours.
I take this mask off. I'm Cardi McSwain. I'm an attorney here in Newport. I primarily practice in real estate and probate and income tax law. Also, I have experience with traffic court. I represented somebody Friday with a speeding ticket. When I'm not practicing law, I'm usually hunting and fly fishing or playing bluegrass music. My wife Caroline is a physician assistant here in Newport. We have a year and a half old baby, Lucy Jean McSwain, who's in the other room. And when I was younger, my mother moved me out of Newport, and when I was 18, I moved back because this is my home, and I wouldn't live anywhere else. We currently live over just outside the city limits, but we've bought a house here in town. It's just across the river from the annex, so I could drive my boat over to City Hall if I had reason to come over here. We already vote in city elections and pay city taxes. We've got property here, including a building downtown.
Who do you want to send it to?
Including a building downtown that we're renovating. It was formerly Dr. Redmond's office and then Tom Testrom's, but we're renovating it. We share the city's desire to revitalize downtown, and we've already done a lot of work, put a new roof, cleaned it up, replacing some windows. So, I'm also, I'm president of the Newport Bar Association. I was appointed by my peers, the other attorneys. I'm about to start my fourth year as treasurer of the Quanis Club, and they trust me with the finances, and I report to the board every month. I'm a deacon at First Baptist Church. My wife is on the board for the Options Pregnancy Center, and I help them out, too. I try to attend all the events that the city hosts, such as Rhythm on the River and the Street Festival. I work with my grandfather at a law office that was founded by my grandfather, Jim, and my great-grandfather, Cardi McSwain, Sr., and they were both U.S. magistrates, and my grandfather was a chancellor. And I'm hoping to continue their service to the community, both as an attorney and as a judge. In preparation for this position, I've talked to city court clerk and talked about how the court functions and what I can do to keep it running smoothly, Tiffany. And I was invited to court to observe, and I came and watched Terry take agreed matters. I talked to Terry, I've talked to other judges, I reviewed the municipal code, I've read the municipal court manual that C-TAS published. I'm prepared to do whatever is necessary to keep the court running smoothly during the COVID pandemic. I'm pretty good with technology, and I could, I'd be open to using video or Zoom or whatever we needed to as this progresses. And as an added bonus, I've beat COVID already, so I should already have those antibodies. So if I miss court, it's not for that. I've done everything I can to be as prepared as possible to be your city judge. And I don't know what you all want in a city judge. If you want one that'll talk a lot and tell jokes and waste time, I'm not your judge. I'll be even-tempered and fair and respectful to all court participants, I listen thoughtfully and give each case due consideration. I can speak effectively and forcefully, and I'll hold the court efficiently. I'm not applying for a job, I'm applying to serve my community, and I know I can do it well. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Cardi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I leave?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Who do you think if I remove this for speaking over here?
Thank you.
Smothers you. All right. Good afternoon. It pleases you, my name is Joanne Sheldon. I am seeking a position for municipal court judge for the city of Newport. I gave each of you one of my packets with my CV and a little bit about myself. I'm everywhere. I'll be getting my master's degree in gerontology in November, and that actually, I believe, is a benefit for the city of Newport based upon my multidisciplinary collaboration that I do across the state of Tennessee. I teach, and I'm over the Fourth Judicial District Elder Abuse Unit, where my name is with teaching and going throughout the state, it brings a lot of notoriety. So beyond my abilities as a prosecutor and 10 years as a defense attorney, it also has the ability to place the city of Newport in a very favorable light. We need that. You need beyond abilities. I have the abilities. I have been a defense attorney for over 10 years. I was death penalty qualified. I had first-degree murder trials, death penalty cases, and as a prosecutor, there's not a case that I have not prosecuted. Everything from first degree all the way down to misdemeanors. For my dealings, General Dunn was gracious enough to allow me to have the Fourth Judicial Elder Abuse Unit, where I don't just focus in Cock County. I am one of the prosecutors, myself and General Thornton, where we prosecute the felony cases in circuit court here. What I do with the Fourth Judicial District Elder Abuse Unit, I prosecute in all four counties in our district, which is Sevier, Jefferson, Granger, and Cock County. And we're talking A felonies and protecting those that are most vulnerable and susceptible to abuse. Now, why is that important for being a city judge? I have to lay out the foundations and the elements, and I have to work with law enforcement all over the state of Tennessee. When there is a unique issue that comes up with elder cases, I receive calls throughout the state of Tennessee and also through the United States. I am seen as an expert in that area, and I think that that would be a wonderful attribute in addition to my ability to make a record, to apply the facts at hand and make a decision. As a prosecutor, that is what I do. I have to make the decision that quick. I have to look at a warrant, have to see that it has the essential elements, and I have to see if there is justice that is going to be served. If a warrant is defective, I have to dismiss that warrant because that is what is right. It is not about wins and losses, it is about doing the right thing. In addition to all the other things that I do, I also, myself and General Thornton, we have a very close relationship with the city, with the police department. We'll be actually doing in-service this week on Thursday where we teach. We also teach with the sheriff's department. Have four children, 30, 28, 15, and 14. Have to keep it straight. They're everywhere, but right now, as soon as we finish here, I'll be going to Cosby to a soccer game, so go Eagles. We're playing Chucky Dokes, so anybody needs, let's go yell for them. General Dunn has been gracious enough to allow me that if appointed in this position on Thursdays, that I would be able to take into consideration and do these duties. I'm up at all hours of night. The officers need anything signed, I sign autopsies, I look at search warrants. I don't sleep. I work. I am a steward of the community, and that is what I do, and that's what I would like to do for you all. And I continue my education, and I would like to continue in the judicial capacity to continue and go on for additional training and to bring a certain respect to this community. Not that it is lacking, but I think we need to proceed, and we need to get our name out there, and I think that will help with tourism as well. There is a bad lot on law enforcement, and we get the short end of the stick here. It's time, let's show them who we are. We have qualified people, and we get it done. I would love the opportunity to do that for you all. And I am vested in this community. My children are. One is a nurse, a sane nurse actually. One is a paramedic, getting ready to go to medical school. And then my children, they want to follow in my footsteps as well. I'm not going anywhere. This is my home. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to stand here in front of you today, and I know this is a difficult decision, and I love Cardi and I love Brittany, we're all friends. So I have nothing slight to say, this is a very difficult decision for all of you, I understand that. But I hope you take into consideration my background, the ever 20 years of experience that I have, and I also have a background in accounting. That is my undergrad degree, so I understand what this community has to look for. So does anyone have any questions that I might answer?
Anything?
Appreciate what y'all do, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Sheldon.
Thank you, Julie.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
How's everybody doing? Can you guys hear me okay through my mask? Hi. I'm Brittany Wald-Vick, and thank you so much for the opportunity to apply today for the next municipal court judge. I'll give you a little background about myself. I was born and raised here, been here my entire life, attended Newport Grammar, I went to Cock County High School. Always knew I wanted to be in the legal field, was a courthouse kid, did my homework in the judge's chair. Kind of banned my sister from that chair, and so I think she leaned towards more of the medical field. Went to chancery land sales most Saturdays, worked in chancery court in high school, a bit in college, then went to the University of Tennessee, graduated early, and went to the Nashville School of Law. While I was in law school, I worked at the law offices of McSwain, McSwain &amp; Green and Ogilvy, Aston, Richardson. Learned some wonderful things from those people in that profession. After graduating from law school, I passed the bar, and I was sworn in by Judge Ben Hooper, and we'd planned to go to lunch that day, and he told me to sit down, and he was going to put me to work. So that's what I did, and I've been here ever since. I really appreciate my community and the judges and the local bar for supporting my small business, keeping me afloat. It's been great to serve in this county. Recently was given the opportunity to serve as the county attorney, and I was wonderfully surprised and grateful for that opportunity. I learned so much from them. I currently practice in circuit criminal chancery, general sessions, juvenile court, primarily in Cock County, but I go to all four, to the fourth districts and surrounding counties. Live in Parritsville with my husband and my little girl. We got a First United Methodist Church. This is where I'm from, this is where my family's from, my husband's from, and ultimately, this is where I want to raise my children. And so, in order to give back, I would love to be the next municipal court judge here. I thank you for your consideration. I know anybody, I'm sure any of us that get selected know that we have big shoes to fill. Ms. Fatah was not only a good friend, but she was a good judge and a good attorney. So I'll leave it at that. If you guys have any questions for me, feel free to ask.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Vick.
Thank you.
I think Regina's going to get up. All right. We've now heard all the presentations of all three candidates, and I'll now open the floor for nominations from the aldermen, alderwomen, and aldermen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Brittany Vick to the position of city judge.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for Ms. Vick to be appointed to city judge. It's been properly seconded. We'll approve that by a normal sign of aye. Need a roll call? Okay. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Orderwoman Louanna Oinger.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford.
Yes.
Okay. Well, it makes it unanimous then. Congratulations, Ms. Vick.
Thank you.
Would you like to add anything at this point?
I'm really excited to get to the start. I appreciate all of you that talked about this, and I'll do my very best. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, don't forget to ask about in the morning at 10:00 a.m. swearing in.
Right. We will be swearing in tomorrow morning, 10:00 a.m. here at the courthouse. Yeah, is that going to fit your schedule?
I will make it. See if I can. I will leave there right now. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I might say something, I would like to say that I don't think we could have had three better candidates for this judgeship. All three are my friends, I consider them my friends. I would have been pleased with any selection. I'm sure Ms. Vick will do a great job, follow Ms. Bell's footsteps, who I loved and admired greatly, so I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, Mayor. I had friends on all sides of this. This is in the almost eight years I've been down here, it was a tough deal for me, and I'm thankful that nobody pulled me into the middle of it, you know, trying to get my influence any way. Nobody did, and I appreciate all of them for that because they are, I'm friends with all of them and friends with their friends and their families, and it was a thing that I don't envy on because it was three good candidates from three good backgrounds, and I don't think you could go wrong, but it was hard. I know it had to be a hard decision to make. I think I told about every one of you that I didn't envy having to make the decision. I'm glad that I didn't have to make that decision. So my congratulations to Brittany, and look forward to working with her. But I wish, you know, I wish we had consolation prizes, which we don't, because I think that they were all three excellent candidates.
Maybe there's something someday that will come up that we can help the others. All of you, I didn't, none of you were selfish, everybody said, you know, the same thing. Very complimentary of everybody, and it's one of the toughest decisions I've ever had to make, because I'm friends with all of you. Appreciate you all taking the interest.
And how fortunate are we as a community to have three such outstanding individuals apply for the same decision? So we are very fortunate to have the three of you in our community.
And I'll add my little two cents in for what it's worth. The only thing I had to go on was the resumes that were submitted. The only one that I actually knew personally was Cardi. So in reading through those resumes, I don't know that I could have made a decision based on just that. So it's very nice to finally put a face with a name and to meet you guys, and I'll echo what everyone else has already said. Three very fine candidates, and we were lucky to have you. Thank you for coming, and congratulations again, Ms. Vick.
I like that. I've been on the hardest decision I ever made, ever had to make. I've lost a little sleep over it, but I think all of you are qualified, good candidates. And I think we had some of the best qualified for it. Thank you all for showing the interest.
It was an extremely difficult decision, and I wish you all the best of luck in future endeavors.
Okay, we'll get to anything else. If not, we'll move on to item number seven, reports from committees, members of council, and other officers, cat of preservation alliance.
This is going to be strange because I feel like I've been coming up here and explaining why we're not done yet for months. This is the first time I'm going to tell you that the lights are on. If you drove by at all this weekend, they were on at night, lit up like Christmas. If anyone stops you in Walmart and says, why are we spending money on lights when no one's there? The contractor pays the bill, or they give us the key, so it wasn't our money. Air conditioner was on as of today. It's cool in there for the first time, well, except for in the winter. In the summer, it's cool in there for the first time in nearly a decade. They're prepping to paint, the ceiling grid is in. We've, we're headed toward the finish line with this finally, so it's nearly killed me, and I'm so angry that it's dragged along this far and so, for this long, but we're getting there. So there's one project that is moving along. Now, I do want to, Mr. Finch, you mentioned this earlier, I've talked to him about it, and we had discussed bringing this up next month, and so, but I brought Randy Beckner here tonight, and I hope, please don't feel put upon, we don't necessarily need action, we just want to bring you up to speed on our CDBG storm drain project and sort of an issue we're having, and maybe perhaps ask that if any of you could or knew someone you could reach out to while we continue to negotiate behind the scenes to deal with the issue we're having, and I'll let Randy give you the Cliff Snoss version of that, that if you all could do that between now and while we work on this. Randy, if you want to.
One thing I'll interject while we're waiting on him to come up. You know, I had wondered what had been the holdup, because I knew we planned on starting this at the end of spring, because we wanted to get it done during the summer. And so, at first, we were held hostage by getting a permit to go under the railroad track. That turned into almost, or could have been a year-long, basically a year-long ordeal trying to get a permit to go under the railroad track to cause the, one of the main issues is we only have two major drains that run to the river, and the river's the only way to get water out of town. And because everything else comes downhill into town, the river's the only way out. And so we had to add another line to increase the flow to get water out of downtown. And the thing to keep in mind is that this project is crucial if we're going to get any investment from outside sources into downtown development. When we first started, one of the first things that we talked about when Gary came on board was revitalization of downtown. Alderman Hansel, when he first ran for alderman, that was a cornerstone of his campaign. He wanted to prioritize the downtown revitalization. That's been a goal of mine since day one, and so when Gary came in, into his position, I tasked him with that being his number one priority. And so he got right on the stick, and he worked closely with Lucas.
One thing I'll interject while we're waiting on him to come up. You know, I had wondered why, you know, what's been the holdup because I knew we planned on starting this at the end, at the end of spring because we want to get it done during the summer. And so we, at first, we were held hostage by getting a permit to go under the railroad track. That turned into almost, or could have been a year-long, basically a year-long ordeal trying to get a permit to go under the railroad track to cause the, the issue, one of the main issues is we only have two major drains that run to the river and the river's the only way to get water out of town. And because everything else comes downhill into town, the river's the only way out. And so we had to add another line to increase the flow to get water out of downtown. And the thing to keep in mind is that this project is crucial if we're going to get any investment from outside sources into downtown development. When we first started, one of the first things that we talked about when Gary came on board was revitalization of downtown. Alderman Hansel, when he first ran for alderman, that was a cornerstone of his campaign. He wanted to prioritize the downtown revitalization. That was, that's been a goal of mine since day one. And so when Gary came in, into his position, I tasked him with that being his number one priority. And so he got right on the stick and he worked closely with Lucas. They brought in potential investors and had them look at downtown and what the possibilities were and they saw a lot of possibilities. But the problem we got into is each and every one of them, when they had an engineer come and look and they started doing the research, we were in a floodplain. And so because of the insurance liabilities, we had to address the storm drainage downtown. It was deemed to be inadequate. And that was why we applied for this grant in the first place, was to address the inadequacy of the storm drainage downtown. The lending associations will not loan money on any projects downtown because of that. So until that is alleviated, we're not going to get any major development downtown. We'll get these folks that come along and put in some little shop or something that might stay a few months or a year and move on. But we have big dreams and big goals and we've had some major developers, some major players come and look at doing some big things here and involving downtown as part of a big, a big overall project, not just the project, but a component of it. And so our future hinges on this project, literally. And so we've, like, it seems like, you know, we went, Gary was, you know, kind of joking about the Tannen building and it's been a major, major hurdle getting that thing done. And now low and behold, the storm drain project is turning into the same beast. You know, first we're held hostage for a year trying to get the railroad okay. That's going under the railroad track to run another trunk line to the river for the west end of town to get this additional, this drainage to the river. Finally, after we jumped through all kinds of hoops and complained and did everything, we finally got permission. Now they've turned around and want to make us pay someone from their organization, an engineer or something, he's going to get into this, but to come and oversee what we're doing every day that we're working on it. And it's a major, it's like, it couldn't be up to $1,600 a day that they want us to pay them to do this work, to watch us do this work, which is ridiculous. It's a new rule they've just put in place. If we had known this was going to be happening, we could have put that into the proposal to the grant application and that additional funds would have been incorporated into the grant. This was not a rule when we applied for this grant. This is something new they've put into place and now they're holding us hostage. It's basically blackmail, the way I see it, saying, "Pay up or you don't do your project." But I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to him and he can get into greater detail of it, but that's the gist of it, you know, in a nutshell.
As Gary and I beat this, this round over the past two years, I put together a timeline just dealing with the issues with the railroad and I'm not going to go over every, every point on here. I like, you know, at the end.
As Gary said, I'm, I'm Randy Beckner. I am a principal and chairman of the board for Mattern and Craig. And I do feel like this project has given Mattern and Craig a black eye over the past couple of years, especially here in Newport. But just going over the issue here, and I've kind of broke the whole, way the whole thing's gone into three phases. The first phase is where we had another project manager, it's actually a principal in the firm, was overseeing this project. He had some health issues that we as a firm were maybe not quick, as quick as we should have been to, to step in. But when I stepped in in December of 19 and went back and started researching, he had made application to, to the rail, it's actually to AECOM is the, was the railroad's consultant that handles the permitting for Norfolk Southern. He had made his first application back in April and had gone through three rounds of comments and resumés before I stepped in. And when I stepped in and made contact with, with AECOM, the person with AECOM that had actually sent the comments, we've got the emails that came from him, claimed that they had no record of this project even in their system, never seen it. So that was the first phase. So I again submitted the application to them and it seemed like the process was going along like it should. We relatively quickly got the permit. We were waiting, well, we got approval of the permit. We were waiting on the permit to come so that we could advertise the project. The funding agency didn't want to advertise and select a contractor till we had the permit in hand. After waiting for a couple of months to get the permit from them, they said that they needed a write-up entry form signed by the contractor in order to issue the permit. I'd never heard that. We always get the permit in hand, put it in the bid documents for the contractor to know what they're bidding on and bid the project. So we went ahead and got permission from the funding agency to go ahead and advertise the project and we did so. And a relatively local contractor, Charles Blay Lockensons, was the low bidder with a bid of around $343,000, which, which was a little bit above the budget amount. And through some negotiations and just different talks with them, one of the things they offered was to eliminate the railroad fees that they would be charged and put that back on the town. And they had $15,000 in their budget to cover that. The language has always been in the permit that the railroad reserves the right to assign someone to oversee a project. I've been doing this for 34 years. I've probably had 50 projects that had permits with Norfolk Southern. I've never had it become an issue that, that it was going to be a huge amount of money. Typically, it's a couple thousand dollars for a flag, a flagger and that's it. After we received our permit, another kind of unique thing on this project, this was a perfect storm project and I was telling, telling Gary, it's so, it's so crazy, I mean, you almost have to laugh about it, which I'm sure nobody here's laughing, but he's either laugh or cry at this point, so I guess we need to laugh. But we've received an email, let's see, we got the permit in April of '20. We received an email from AECOM in June that basically said that Norfolk Southern had selected a new consultant to handle their permitting, a new consultant called Rail Pros. Again, I've been doing this for 34 years and we've dealt with AECOM since, since day one. So this is a brand-new change and it's my understanding that Rail Pro, Rail Pros has the inspection services in their contract where AECOM was strictly the permitting agency and Norfolk Southern handled the flagging and inspections. So now midstream, we've got a new consultant to deal with and they are the ones that are indicating all of these, these exorbitant fees for two people. One to flag when there's a train coming and another person to do the inspection of the construction, anytime there's any construction done within the right-of-way of the railroad, which your streets are within the railroad right-of-way, the way they claim the right-of-way. So when the contractor started trying to get his write-up entry form and was told the kind of fees he was looking at and he came up with approximately $60,000 if, if they really provide two people and build them like they say they can. And he's basically, at that point, refusing to sign the contract and honestly, I don't blame him. Again, reputable contractor, they've done this kind of work for years, have never seen anything like this. I've been doing it for 34 years and have never seen anything like this. I even went to a contact that I have at Norfolk Southern. He's actually on the industrial side, industrial economic development type side. And he said, "Let me do some investigating" and he even said, "That sounds crazy. Let me look." But of course, as it went up the chain, he sent an email back saying, "There is language that they reserve the right to charge these fees and there's nothing he can do about it for us." So that's where we stand. I wish I had a good suggestion. You know, the permit was issued under AECOM. I don't know if there's anything, if anybody had any political pull further up that could talk to someone about letting AECOM finish this project instead of Rail Pros. I just, I just don't know. I'm at a loss, like I say, and I've never been at a loss in 34 years on anything to deal with my, with this industry, but this, this has got me.
Well, it seems to me that that would be a conflict of interest for Rail Pros to be the one that decides whether or not somebody needs to come and then them be the ones that gets paid for somebody to come. Because common sense is going to tell you that they're probably going to make you do it every time because they're going to make money every time they make you do it. That decision should not be in the hands of someone who is going to prosper by the decision. It should be someone like it was before where the person making the decision was not going to profit either way on whether or not that somebody had to come and monitor the, the project. This group, the way it's set up now, you know, they're going to go for theirself every time. They're going to say, "Yeah, we need somebody there every day. It's imperative because we're going to make money on it." And so that, to me, that is absolute conflict of interest that you let someone be, have that kind of authority that is going to prosper by making you do it.
What's our, our alternative? You know, if we don't do this, I mean, what do you, what do you do?
Well, like he said, we, you know, we, if we can apply some pressure, which is hard to do on the railroad, they may, because this project was started under the old system, allow it to finish under the old system. I think they should, but I'm biased because we had no way, you know, to know they were going to do this. Sure, the language was in there, but as he said, it had never been done before. You know, there's lots of language that comes in in contracts that doesn't get applied. And so when your experience is they never do that, then you don't think about it because they never do it. So why would you worry about it? Now all of a sudden, they're going to start doing it. And if this is an example of what they're going to do under that authority, then they would be able to do the exact same thing if we decide to pave a street. If we decide to pave a street that's within that circumference that they claim of the proximity to the railroad track, they can come in and hold us hostage again and make us pay them again. Anytime, if we, if NU comes in and has to dig up a line down there, they can do them the same way. That's a load of bull when they can come in and extort money out of you every time you've got to work on a, on anything that's within that, that distance. And that's just, that is a bad system and we need, we need to apply some pressure to try to get that looked at because that is not, to me, that is not ethical.
Randy and Chris with Community Development are going to keep working on this and keep running up the chain as many times as we can, but if any of you have a contact, whether it's our state rep, state senator, a phone call into them, I can talk to them and lay it out for them. Randy could lay everything out for them so they know all the players in the game, but if anybody knows somebody that could maybe help us either state level or somewhere else, then that's, that's why we're bringing this to you and asking you to consider to think about it. A phone call that could maybe, maybe get somebody pushing with us in the right direction to help us come up with this.
Can I see you after the meeting for me?
Sure, sure.
Me?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Was it where your contact?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
What is the right-of-way distance on either side of the, of the tracks?
They, they claim 100 feet, 100 feet. Based on, based on building frontages here, it's more like 55, 45 through, through town here.
Right, and you fed off to the sidewalks.
Fair down on that end, I tried to get information on the spur at the Old Mill side and, you know, it was very trysome to get the right-of-way off of the spur that's down near the Old Mill side. And all that has to come out of a land at Norfolk Southern.
Now, I will say, in our contract, we had $20,000 in our contract to do inspections, but if the railroad is going to be here and overseeing like that, you know, we could, we could give 15,000 of that out of our contract, give that back to use to offset some of those costs and, you know, we would, we wouldn't need to have a little bit to come do some periodic checks on what's going on, but if, if the railroad's really here, then we could, we could come off of 15,000 at our end.
And we'll keep, like I said, we'll keep working and we'll come back next month with some of the more detail, but that, we're sort of at the point now where we probably need a little bit of help to get, to get further than we've gotten so far.
We, we need some pressure applied.
Yes.
To try to get some pressure applied to them.
Have they done this somewhere else?
Like I say, this, not with, with our firm, but like I say, the switch from AECOM to Rail Pros, right in the middle of this project is, is what's kind of got everybody up in arms. Like I say, the contractors, it's first they've heard of it. So, you know, and it may be a new consultant, this posturing, and they may come out and look at, when they get started and say, "Okay, we'll see you next week." But going into it, you don't know what they're going to do.
And soon they don't see.
You got, you got a plan for the worst and hope for the best, I guess, is.
From the beginning, we have said, and Gary and I in our discussions, you know, on the flagging, that we can, you know, if they will allow it, we'll do our own flagging. You know, if it's just to flag the traffic, we will do that ourselves. We've got plenty of personnel that are qualified to flag. And so, but based on this, they probably say that we can't. They, we have to hire their, have to pay for their flaggers.
We've chipped money out of the budget already because of the overage from the beginning, but, I mean, you know, anyway, we'll keep trying to be creative. That's what we do here sometimes and make it important, but yeah, a little, a little, if anybody knows somebody that can maybe help, that's probably all.
Well, thank you for that offer on the offset, ma'am.
Their term for flagging is not the same as our term. That is someone with the railroad that knows the schedules and knows the train is five minutes out, three minutes out, two minutes out and can ensure that there's no activities going on construction-wise that would, that would, and they won't let someone else do that. The flagging, I, I can live with the flagging a whole lot easier than I can live with the cost of construction inspection.
I guess the flagging that we talked about was the, was, yeah, for the construction.
Yeah, right. But I'd probably call it just flag.
Well, it's just flagging's flagging in my mind.
Was there any advance notice given of this change or is it because the language was already in there? They felt?
Well, like I say, the language in the permit is the same as every permit we've had forever and they do reserve the right to come out and inspect, you know, in unique situations or something and, but, I mean, you know, we're doing, we're doing a boar pit where the pit is on the opposite side of the street from the railroad and it boring under everything. It's just.
We had planned for them to actually be there the days we were literally going under the track, but then otherwise there's no need.
Well, that's the only thing that makes sense. I mean, it makes no sense if they watch us go up and down the center of the road. I mean, I don't see how they have to worry.
The work is on Woodlon and Main. The majority of, I mean, you're just looking at that little bit of right-of-way we're going under with that, at the pass at Woodlon, but.
It's not about two trains come through a day anyway. It's not like crowded with them.
He timed it right. You should be able to get in and out of there if anybody knows.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, it's something we're going to have to do.
Well, that's, you know, that's, that's our problem. We're going to have to do it, but we need to try to get that price down if we can because as they said, we're already way over budget on the bid. And so you add another 60,000 on top of that and you're starting to get into some serious money.
The same as the sticks always crap-coated.
And we get the sharp end of it, too.
Okay, yeah. Coach Walton, speak with you after me.
I didn't take many with the.
Well, we, we need to call, we need to call our representatives and our people to try to see if they don't, can't get, can't put, put some pressure somewhere, maybe Congressman Monroe with Phaeton and Sutherland at the state level and see if they can make some phone calls that'll try to get us some relief somewhere or some way.
This, I mean, this is, Mr. Finch, this is an economic development project. This is, this is for investment in downtowns, for jobs in downtown. It's not just because we felt like doing something, spending a couple hundred thousand dollars. This is, this is millions of potential future revenue we're. This is, this is millions of potential future revenue we're doing this project bank on. So, it is. Okay. If you have any other further questions, you can grab Randy or I afterwards.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we move on to item number eight, which is old business, our unfinished business. And item A is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2020-06, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2020-06, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget capital program in the city of Newport, Tennessee, this year 2020-2021, second reading.
No comments? We need a motion to approve that amendment?
A motion to approve ordinance 2020-06 as written.
Second. All right, we do have a motion on the board to approve the motion, the reading of ordinance number 2020-06, budget amendment for the city of Newport on second reading. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, our new business, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2020-07, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2020-07, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget capital program in the city of Newport, Tennessee, this year 2020-2021 for Newport Grammar School.
This will be the first reading. First reading. Need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we do have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 2020-07, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. It has been properly seconded. Are there questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approve by roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration Resolution Number 2020-15, authorizing the city of Newport to accept funding earmarked for the Tanner Building project from Walter State Community College Foundation and to amend the contract with Prehn Construction.
Okay, three things in this resolution. The first one is that the Schultz Family Foundation, which made the $100,000 donation earmarked for the Tanner Building to the Walter State Foundation, that money's in their account. We have to resolve to accept it from them via a letter that's written, ready to go, that I'll send tomorrow if approved. Second thing is that we have to resolve to amend the contract, to add in the cost because we added the doors and the windows for Walter State and a couple other things. But the added cost went over the, originally voted on budget, so this amends that budget. No new taxpayer funding going into it. It's all covered by what is in the Walter State Foundation. Third thing, Walter State has paid to, because what we were going to end up doing is if we paid for the data drop, the internet connection to go in the building, we would have paid what was originally in the budget, which is around $20,000. And then we would have had to pay a second contractor, Walter State would have paid a second contractor to go in behind us and do it the way they wanted it. So, we're going to make a change order to the contract to remove the data and Walter State is going to pay for the data in the entire building. That third mark, the third point of the resolution says that we reimburse them for any money that they put in related to that. Does all that make sense?
Clear as mud.
Right.
How much would that be?
17,500 is what's going to cost them to put the data in. And I think our original line item was 20, because we changed, yeah, so it saves money overall.
Is Prehn agreeable to changing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're good. And the thing, too, is Prehn couldn't kick their sub out and just let another one come in. That's a breach of contract with them. So, this fixes it, saves money, and is legal, which is the best part.
Well, my only question is, are we going to have to have a motion for each one of those segments?
No, the resolution contains everything. Right, Terry? The way we did it? Yeah.
I think the resolution will cover everything.
Yeah, did you, because Terry and I kicked this around.
We did.
Yeah.
We talked about it. We weren't sure if the council needed to approve it, but just on the abundance of caution, we brought to the council, I think y'all need to be aware of it, need to vote on it, assuming you approve of it, vote for it.
All right. You have heard the resolution. We'll need a motion to approve.
A motion to approve Resolution 2020-15 as written with necessary changes. That's a mouthful.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we do have a motion on the board to approve the Resolution Number 2020-15, authorizing the city of Newport to accept funding earmarked for the Tanner Building project from Walter State Community College Foundation and to amend the contract with Prehn Construction. It has been properly seconded. Are there further questions to the motion? Hearing none, please approve by roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Item C is consideration of amending the Newport Police Department general orders.
I'm going to take my Gary Carver time here. As we all know, 25th of May of this year, tragic event occurred in Minneapolis, Minnesota. As a result of that, policies in law enforcement have been directed to be changed. Our governor on July the 2nd sent out a, had a press conference and set forth some standards that should be used in new policy. There were 13 words that had to be included or their equivalent and 17 phrases for their equivalent. Fortunately, the state of Tennessee's Association of Chiefs of Police commissioned a go-by general order for the use of force policy. And basically what we'd asked tonight is there will be a total revision of our use of force policy, everything from use of force hands all the way down to deadly force. It had to incorporate a couple of federal case laws that is also incorporated in this new policy that is presented to you tonight as policy number five. Also, the duty to intervene policy would be in 2.25, which is if an officer observes an officer violating someone's civil rights or doing something wrong, they are mandated to intervene, which we would hope would be a natural thing anyway if an officer saw another officer violating the law. Also, there's a number 2.26 is asphyxia awareness. And that directs us to know the signs of asphyxia by the definition in the policy. It also gives us some direction on what to do in the event of an arrest and someone seems to be the subject of an asphyxia-type attack, how to maneuver them, how to make sure that they get medical help and also to make sure that the reports are followed up on by the department. But also, this requires us to review these policies annually and make any changes that may need to occur. And those policies have to be amended by the Newport City Council, not those particular changes, but you're the only ones that can make changes to the general orders.
And I would like to, and I reviewed this and I think Chief Schultz has done a good job presenting this to the council and I think it's where we need to be as far as approving and incorporating this into our general orders.
And would give you all this little tidbit of information, there is a national consensus policy that has been basically put forth as a go-by and the state of Tennessee's is stronger than the national consensus policy. So we are moving to the forefront in protecting the civil rights of those that we encounter.
So, we need a motion to approve for consideration of amending Newport Police Department general orders.
Mayor, since this is an ordinance, I need to read the caption into the record.
Okay.
Um, no, excuse me. I've got to...
I don't see the ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. So, we don't have to read it in, but we do need a motion and a vote.
I'll make the motion.
Say.
All right, we do have a motion on the board to approve consideration of amending the Newport Police Department general orders. It has been properly seconded. Are there any other questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, please approve by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
In all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all for the job y'all do, too.
We'll be training on these and getting them into effect immediately. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses. First is consideration of the annual salt bid for the city of Newport.
Just the state contract, they get $94.14 a ton. It's Cargill, that's the one we got from last year with Tennessee. That's what we go with. I don't know how much we'll need, depends on the winter, I guess.
You do have a letter in your package showing that $94.14 a ton?
Yes, sir.
How does that differ from what we've had in the past?
I don't know how much it was last year.
Is it up or down?
I don't remember the exact amount, but I think it is up, but it's only a few dollars. And we have not had to buy a lot of salt in the past couple years historically since we've been looking at the state contract. They are lower than any other on their salt bid year over year.
Okay.
We do have our bins full, so we might not have to buy any if we don't have a bad winter. We may have to buy a little or may have to buy a lot, but I don't see really have to use a whole lot.
We bought very little last year.
The total.
I was just clearing my throat.
The total budgeted is 15, so it's not going to be probably a lot.
Appreciate the job y'all do when it comes winter time, too.
Thank you, Coach. We try our best.
If we had to default on that, could you cover us for a time? If we had to default on that, could you cover us for a time?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, we need a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the annual salt bid for the city of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, will approve by, instance of the money, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you all.
All right, item B is consideration of purchase and installation of equipment for new police vehicles.
Last month, we asked y'all to approve the purchase for the budgeted two vehicles. In so doing, we put down the number for just the cost of the vehicles. Y'all approved the purchase of the actual vehicles. This is budgeted money, which would be the radios, the blue lights, sirens, all that stuff that would be placed on the car and the markings. It's what we basically call upfitting a Ford interceptor police car.
Heard the presentation. We need, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the purchase and installation of equipment for two new police vehicles.
Yes, those ones were approved last month. We just put the wrong figure down and had the purchase of the vehicles and not the outfit as well.
Okay. How much difference is that? What are we talking about?
It's just under $10,000.
Additional for both vehicles?
That's $5,000 per vehicle for the blue lights, the sirens, the markings, everything. When we get done with that, I can hand the man a key and he can go stop a car immediately.
And you did say we, that this is a budgeted item?
It is budgeted. We just had the calculations different last month for just the purchase of the vehicles and not the outfit.
Okay. All right, I do have a motion on the board then to approve the purchase and installation of equipment for new police vehicles. It's been properly seconded. Are there any more questions? Hearing none, will approve our roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Then again, we're at the mercy of Ford Motor Company. If they're operating and building, we get one when we get it.
Well, they're still building ventilators, I hear, so... Consideration of bid for downtown Newport signage.
This was, you saw the art for the downtown signage. This is a grant from the Tennessee Downtowns Program. The two bids were parrot out of Knoxville and Moorestown signage came in significantly lower. We recommend to go with Moorestown signs as the low bid and we should be actually able to get more signs than what I put out in the bid package because they are so much lower. It's a good thing.
Okay, I didn't see that in, is that in the package?
Should be.
Do you have any...
Mm-hmm. Oh, the diagram is right.
I didn't include the part again, just the...
Oh, you didn't include it?
No, it should be three pages, one that tells you the narrative and the two bid pages.
Okay, I did see that. Okay, I did see that. Okay. We need a motion then to approve. Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the bid for downtown Newport signage. It has been properly seconded. We will, are there any other questions to that motion? Hearing none, please approve by roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Mike, or Vice Mayor Mike Prophet?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're at item number 11, which is comments from our citizens. Five minutes, if anyone would like to come forward and comment on anything pertinent to the city of Newport. We're here none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
And we have been seconded and we are adjourned.